Six.
And justice for all.
Tell the Father that I am here for you in the name of Jesus, the nice Lord who sent him to this day. I ask that you bless this meeting tonight with you and everybody here and give them all wisdom and conduct business before the town of the Lord and Jesus.
Rossi and Tepke in here.
Tracy Boston Law.
Tim Kremm.
Mike Green.
Tony Union.
All right. Um, I set up the minutes to...anybody have a chance to take a look at those this morning?
I did.
Any corrections needed? To accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Plan board, I'm thinking that's an old.
Yeah, this is just the official assigning the...the office of key. I was only reaching out to the company that wanted to...
Okay.
And they never got back.
And they never got back to you?
Mm-hmm. I tried to waste.
Carl, do you know who is up on the cell phone right now on the tower?
Currently, it should be the original, uh, down on one. Uh, I think it was like a AT&T, just like a piggyback type deal they did with that and Verizon that's one where they're gonna have to do that.
So Verizon's up there?
Verizon's supposed to be up here.
Okay, and is Satan...
The T-Mobile one, they just got their permit like a couple weeks ago and they said within like three to six months, they said they're gonna be doing it.
Okay.
What I will say on that note is, is in the contract for that cell phone tower, you'll probably have to reach out to them like I did when Verizon came aboard. But the town's revenue increases if that is another provider.
Excellent.
But they don't willingly use, or at least with Verizon, it wasn't like...
Of course not.
Imagine that.
What a challenge.
No, it's part of the contract.
Do they have any other questions or comments about that? Nope, seen them. We'll move on to, all right, our department reports. Starting with emergency management.
All right, Gary Wheeler and the fire chief and emergency management director. Um, so I do have some emergency management stuff, uh, this month. Uh, myself and firefighter Frugman attended, uh, county preparedness meeting in Faber County Public Health down in Summersworth. Um, there was a couple presentations from the state mostly related to, uh, health pandemic kind of responses. Um, we're gonna continue to...we're gonna continue to beat on... Uh, myself and Chief Ferguson attended a school evacuation preparedness meeting in New Durham with Governor of the school district and home security emergency management. I was gonna say on reunification, uh, said we were, if we were to have an event, uh, how we would move the students and staff offsite. Um, and get the, the students reunited with their families. Um, firefighter Frugman, uh, wrote the town a new local emergency operations plan for just finalizing the details. And then that will be submitted to the state and city updated every five years. Um, we're two years past that, so. Uh, just wanna thank him. He took his own time and did that for us, um, off the clock, so that was very nice of him to do. Um, and we're working with the school to explore, uh, some grant opportunities to get a generator at the school as that's our designated shelter. And the school is wired, there's a pad there for it. We're just gonna need to get a, a generator and, and get it put on the pad and installed, so. That's in the works. We're hoping to find some grant opportunities. We'll see kinda how the political environment plays out with the grant opportunities right now, but, uh, either way, we're working towards getting a generator for the school. Um, so that's all I have for emergency management. Anybody have any questions on...
I have a question regarding the school. Um, since it is an emergency shelter, does anybody in town have keys for that other than the principal?
Fire department.
The fire department, okay.
Yep. So we have a Knox box in the building, so we can access the building at any point in time if needed. Um, then the, the shelter resources are stored between Rochester and Farmington, the county resources, so we would just have to call them and if needed. That's a great question. Any, any other? All right, I'll move on. Sorry, I have a new team. I'll just move right on the fire.
Absolutely. Hey, Jared.
Um, so as far as the fire department, uh, in the month of March, we had twenty-four calls for service, uh, fifteen medical calls and nine fire responses. Uh, we had, uh, we did have to call in two mutual aid ambulances, one from Milton, one from Farmington. We did have a third mutual aid ambulance, but that was for a second patient on a call. Our truck was already entered to the hospital. Um, uh, Engine One responded to Wakefield for station coverage, um, for a small fire they had in East Wakefield. Um, Tanker Five and Car One, uh, myself, Assistant Chief Porto, and Engineer Rivera responded to a second on building fire in the town of Farmington. Um, later in the month, Engine One and Tanker Five, with myself, Engineer Rivera, Captain... Beer responded to a second on building fire in the town of Wolfboro. Um, unfortunately during that event, Engine Five, or Tanker Five rather, did break down, um, had to be towed.
Must've been the driver.
It was, uh, it ended up just being a simple issue with the fuse and it killed the batteries and the truck died, so we did have to have it towed. Uh, between the towing and the repair, it was, uh, just over a thousand dollars, um, to get the truck back in service. Um, crouch towing did take very good care of the town though. As far as the towing bill goes, it's less than half of what it should have been, uh, for a heavy truck to be towed, and they did it in a snowstorm. So we just wanna thank them for, for working with us to help keep costs down. Um, we're continuing to work on updating our policies and our reporting to the state. Um, at this point, we are up to date with our ENFERS reporting, which is our National Fire Institute reporting. Um, it needs to be submitted every year. Uh, we've been in the process, it sounds like the last couple years we're trying to catch up. We are now officially caught up, which helps with our grant status and stuff like that, so. So that's a, that was a project that we, that we worked with and we're, we're up to speed as well as our, our reporting software is now being done through the state, which is at zero cost to the town. So, uh, it was a savings of about sixteen hundred dollars a year to switch to the state's platform, so. So that's all up and running and, uh, and we've been, been working with it. It's been working pretty well, so. Um, our apparatus renumbering, rebranding is underway. Um, guys, probably once we saw it, he came in, the command vehicle looks a little different. Um, the lettering was falling off the vehicle, so we had to replace. Uh, the ambulance, um, part, part of our rebranding kinda put a, a different foot forward. We did have the ambulance changed. It's no longer green. I know most of the numbers are pretty disappointed about that. No, uh, uh, just kidding. On a serious note, though, it does look different. Also, it has been renumbered as, as ambulance three. So we don't have three ambulances, if anybody's wondering. We only have one. We're just trying to get rid of our repeating numbers. We do share a radio frequency with Farmington, New Durham, and Milton. They all operate ambulance one. As well as we did, it just makes everything confusing for dispatch, so we're gonna have ambulance three, just to take some of the confusion out of things. Um, so that, that's kinda why that, that's the, the backstory on why the ambulance is now ambulance three. Um, we only have one. It just says ambulance three. It's the same truck. It just looks a little different now. Um, the new fire truck is in production. Um, it will be Engine Four when it comes. It's replacing Engine One, but it'll be Engine Four again, part of getting rid of the, the repetitive numbers. Um, so myself and, uh, Engineer Rivera will go down to inspect the truck and drive it back from Louisiana in early June, um, at the latest. So the truck's in production now. They said early June is the latest it'll be completed, so. Um, Deputy Chief Manchester developed a new training plan for the department and that's been implemented and, uh, I think going very well. Um, all the officers are, are trading off, taking turns, uh, teaching the firefighters some new skills. So we're, we're moving forward in that and, uh, and everything's going pretty well up there.
Perfect.
Anybody have any questions on anything? All right, thank you.
All right.
We'll have the original batteries, so that says something to shut off switches and be in garage, being in heated, so. Uh, replaced the headlight in truck number one and also the plow control module. What that does is when you put the plow on, the module switches from the headlights on the truck to the, to the ones on the plow. Had one, one part of that module was, was no good and the headlight was burnt out. Uh, put up the posted signs, spoke to all the contractors in town that were working at the time, uh, just so they had a good understanding of what we were expecting. Uh, checked on the drainage issue from the last meeting down here on Ridge Road. Uh, constantly was checking on all the dirt roads, uh, as they were thawing out. Made sure there was no soft spots that needed to be taken care of and tried to take care of potholes as we could. Um, they are pretty well thawed out now. There's a few cold spots. Um, we've been raking and, and, um, back dragging with the loader, trying to fill in the potholes and then, uh, as soon as they dry out fully, we'll get the rake out, pull everything in, and we'll get everything touched up on the dirt roads. Uh, changed the oil in truck number one. Um, checked all the cross culverts, um, had a lot of rain, so clearing out leaves and debris and stuff like that. Some of them still had some stones, but, uh, they're all pretty well thawed out now. Uh, we pushed up the sand at the salt yard with the loader. Uh, we, when we use sand, of course it's down there with no salt in it and, uh, plain sand, so it chumps up. So you have to get into where it's softest so you can use it the truck, so. Pushed all that up and kinda cleaned that up a bit. Uh, washed all the trucks, oiled and greased, uh, trucks and sanders. Uh, as I said, back dragged the dirt roads, trying to fill in the potholes with the loader. Uh, we did rake, rake Fox Road. That was the first road that we had raked. And, um, of course then we muddied up again with all the rain and the other stuff. Uh, took care of the, uh, pit permit up in New Durham, uh, which allows us to have our materials for, uh, gravel, sand, stone, stuff like that. That's what, uh, what we had crushed this, this last year. Plowed and treated a five and a half inch storm on three twenty-four. Um, checked on Buttermilk Lane and that was after, after the town meeting. There was a bit of a question on Buttermilk Lane, uh, on the extension part of it, the dirt part of it. So I think we've got that pretty well figured out.
What was the result?
Uh, the result is, um, there is a letter in the, um, in the, uh, registry of deeds that says that we only take care of that to where we have been and, um, any self-divided lots that were there, we're gonna apply to that too. So we actually should have letters from each one of the, the lots that are on that, um, saying that they are, um, aware of that the town doesn't take care of it and they don't hold the town liable for any damages to their vehicles and all that. So now I say, perfect. Um, and Robin did most of the legwork on that. Um, okay. Called Caterpillar about getting the bucket rebuilt. Um, as I said, it's a, um, two thousand fourteen. Um, just regular wear from, you know, scooping up sand and gravel and stuff. So what my plans are, I may try to get, I may try to buy another bucket. So I, so we'll have two buckets, send that one out, get it, get it redone, unless they can do it in timely, timely fashion. And I can utilize, um, you know, other equipment rather than the loader at that point. We'll, we'll, we'll get it figured out. I also asked him about, uh, a brush more for the loader as well. Uh, so the guy is supposedly getting back many salesmen. Plowed and treated another two inch storm on three twenty-nine. That one there was the one that was mostly sleet. Uh, the following day, had to treat the roads. We had rain too sleet on that one. Um, fix the front plow lights on, on number twenty-seven, which is that medium-sized truck. And, uh, that one also had a, uh, a leg on the module that was burnt out, but I was able to use the module off of truck number one because of the way the lights are, are wired. It only used two of the legs on the module, so I was able to use that one in place of the one that was no good, so we lucked out on that. Modules are a hundred fifty-seven dollars a piece, so not as bad as I thought they'd be. Um, checked the roads for down limbs and trees after a windy night. Um, treated all paved roads. We had less than an inch on four-three. Uh, took the pump readings, which we do every month. Usually at the beginning of the month, we take the pump readings over there for the fuel and, and gasoline. And then, um, there's fobs that you check in with, so the school has their own, the fire department has their own, highway department and the police department. So that's what keeps track of all the fuel and what the uses is. Uh, and those, those I'll go over to Kim and it's kind of a tedious job, but that's the way we keep track of it. Um, again, back dragged the roads with the loader. Also, uh, tried to clean up the town beach, which is the turnaround for the bus as well. Uh, was getting kinda choppy there by the edge of the pavement, so tried to take care of that and we'll, we'll tune that up again. Uh, did, uh, four driveway permits, one on Lakeshore, one on Pinkham, and two on Spruce. Um, changed teeth on the York rake. York rake is, uh, what we use to, to smooth up the dirt roads. And on the, the bottom of the York rake, there's some power bike teeth that are in, are in holders. And what you have to do is loosen up the whole thing and, uh, take each one out individually and put in a vice, knock them out with the, with our, um, chisel, air chisel, and then put the new one in and put it back in, so. Uh, that was a good idea that they put those on there. Plowed and treated a four and a half inch storm on four twelve. Um, did get a new key for the Silver Street turnaround. The gate down there, there's, is, uh, Town Forest. And it's also owned by, uh, Matt Shagnon. Uh, Matt went over there and found that the lock wouldn't work. And, uh, so he got a new lock, had another key made up, and I gave the key to, uh, Chief Wheeler. So he has the key for that in case we have any situations out there. And I did get a, I got an email from Alliance Trucks, which is what the, where we got, actually the new trucks we got from, uh, DePree Seals. But Alliance takes care of all the extended warranty stuff. So they offered up a, they offered up an, uh, an extended warranty. Uh, we have a year to, uh, think about this, but I'm just gonna present it to you guys tonight as far as what they're... So the engine and after treatment, uh, for seven years, and I believe right now, uh, it's a three-year one, but I'll look, I'll look into that to make sure. But the engine and after treatment, um, is five thousand nine hundred ninety dollars for a seven-year extended warranty. So that's, um, mi- uh, miles or years. Usually the years come first. Um, but like I said, that's, uh, six thousand dollars for that. And then they also have one on the transmission, which is an Allison's and automatic. They're pretty bulletproof. Uh, that one there, they extend that out another four years, so that would be seven years, and that's, uh, sixteen hundred dollars. So, but like I said, we have a full year to, um, enact this, so, uh, September twenty-second is our, our deadline. So we'll do a little more homework on that and then we can decide. I don't know what they did in the past. Uh, myself, I'm not an extended warranty type of guy, but, um, that doesn't mean that we can look at it and if it makes sense to us that we wanna do it that way, then, then we can do that. And, uh, they just, uh, Viking just called me today and they're the people who do the body and the plow gear on the trucks. So they just called me. Morning on, we'll be good.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be good.
Thank you.
All right?
All right.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you, please, Jim. All right. Chief Ferguson?
All right. I do have some reports. I put them right there on the table. It's maybe awesome. Kinda shortened it up a little bit this month as far as, uh, kinda leaving off on projects that we're still just continually working on and will continue to work on. But, uh, I did add one new category to the reported cloud. You see on the top, the first line, calls for service. Um, I kinda felt it was beneficial for everyone just to understand. So I put our calls for service in there. The town of Middleton Police Department took a hundred and eighty-eight calls for service from, through dispatch. Uh, and then it, they, you'll see how it kinda breaks down. Incidents investigated, we had twenty-six. We didn't have any arrests or motor vehicle accidents this past month. We did have a couple vehicles off the road during those snowstorms, but no damage to the cars, so they didn't result in accident reports. Uh, nine citations or, or motor vehicle warnings were issued. Um, to get back to the calls for service, so what that is, is that's, that's everything that we've been called to through dispatch. Uh, and you'll see that the numbers below that may not coincide with it because it could be simply phone call requests or, uh, you know, you respond to somebody's home for an incident and come to find out it's, it's, you know, a, a civil matter, not a legal matter. Uh, things along those lines. But we responded to the calls, so that's why I kinda put that in there, just so everyone kinda has an understanding there. Uh, continued training. We continued work on recruitment. Uh, we conducted interviews with, with some candidates. Uh, we'll continue that process moving forward into the next month. Right now, I'm also working on a study right now, a pay study for part-time employment. Um, our pay rate is, is rather low at this point for part-timers. So I've reached out to Carroll County. I'm working on, uh, Strabber County now, just trying to get statistical numbers because there aren't a lot of agencies out there that have part-time. It's, it's basically the smaller ones, more prone towards the Carroll County as opposed to Strabber County. Uh, and I'll get that up to you guys at some point probably here in this coming month, uh, just to kinda look at the part-time pay and see what we can do if anything there. I completed a cruiser inventory as well. I emptied out all the cars. Um, the cars are equipped with a, uh, an amount of gear that's necessary for the handling of calls. Um, anything from measuring tapes, CPR masks, D-FIBs, lockout kits, uh, throw rope, fingerprint kits, the list goes on and on. Right, if you will. Um, you know, it was just big piles of stuff. And then I, uh, we had some storage containers already in the shed that I'm, that I'm reutilizing and I'm slowly going through all of that equipment, getting rid of stuff that is broken, malfunctioning, or not correct, uh, and putting new equipment gear, uh, in each car. So that each car is outfitted exactly the same, so no matter which car you jump in, you got everything you need. Um, I was a little hampered with that, with the weather, because mother nature can't seem to make up her mind and everything's in the shed, so I'm outside the whole time doing it. Um, conducted further training with our secretary. I'm happy to say that she is working out well. Um, she is definitely a, um, take the task at hand kind of person. I'm very confident in her, her abilities. She's learning pretty quickly. Um, and I'm already giving her ancillary tasks outside of stuff that I would've given to the past secretary. Um, and she's, she's doing good with that as far as reaching out, making contacts, getting follow-up information, whatever you're forming. Uh, some things I didn't put on the sheet, obviously, is just day-to-day stuff, um, that we deal with day-to-day. And they are doing line work or, or fiber work, I'm not quite sure, um, here in Middleton, starting at midnight tonight. Um, so there may be, uh, service interruptions as far as your phone service goes, uh, between midnight tonight and noon time tomorrow. So they strongly urge people for night and noon time tomorrow. So they strongly urge people, for those that are listening or watching the video, uh, if you need nine-one-one or if you have an emergency and you have a cell phone. Tonight, um, so there may be, uh, service interruptions as far as your phone service goes, uh, between midnight tonight and noon time tomorrow. So they strongly urge people, for those that are, we urge people, for those that are listening or watching the video, uh, if you need nine-one-one or if you have an emergency and you have a cell phone, when, if, if traffic is needed, traffic assistance is needed, when, if, if traffic is needed, traffic assistance is needed, so. And with that, that's about it. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, Chief, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Please don't think this is the wrong way, because I know and I see you out there constantly. But, uh, the citations seem low. Is that just because people are driving better or?
To be honest with you, the, the citations are low, um, just because of, uh, other, and like today's... patrols or enforcements over on 153 from Wakefield up to the mill, Governor's Road, and then also from the mill down, down to the town beach. And all in all, relatively, everybody is, is driving pretty, pretty good.
That's good, yeah.
If you will. Don't get me wrong, there's, there's some here and there. So, yeah.
Like I said, I, I see you out, so that's why I just care.
Yeah, no, as, as far as the traffic goes, one thing, another thing, I know I've spoken with a couple of you one-on-one basis, but here in the coming weeks, I'm also going to submit a letter up to you folks as far as requesting the state to have a reevaluation done of the speed limits on Route 153. For, for, for multiple reasons, one being the, just the alternating changes of limit. If you go from Wakefield, coming from Wakefield, it's 35, then it bumps up to 50, then it drops back down to 30, then it goes up to 50, then it goes back down to 35. So one complaint I got from the traveling motorists here in town is, you know, basically that it's hard for them to, to realize which zone they're in when I pull them over. The other part of that as well is that I think the last time an evaluation was done for the speed limits, I don't think that those areas were developed as much as they are now. I could be wrong. I haven't seen the date of when the last one does, was done. But I will say from putting the speed trailer out on Route 153, it's out there right now as well, 50 miles an hour down through that road is, is pretty fast in, in certain areas.
That drops pretty quick too, from 50 to 35.
It does. And, and so I had to travel through there. I know I traveled through there just to make sure the speed trailer was, was operating properly. And as I traveled through there, it, it dawned on me, because I, I usually do 40 through there, maybe 45, but as I was traveling through there at 50, 55 miles an hour, it dawned on me with the residential areas around there that if something jumps out in the road, you don't have much, they're narrow roads to begin with. You don't have.
Yeah, especially the way the hills go, some of them.
Yeah, where it's hilly and what have you. So I am going to send that up to you folks here in the coming weeks. It's something that has to be requested by the board of selectmen, it can't be requested by me, so. But yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Any questions for Chief? No? Perfect. All right. Town clerk treasures report. Looks like we had front of the grant hole of $8,707.70. Let's see, treasures report. Uh, let's see, we got a treasures report. Our reviewed information provides me conference down finances for the month. All right, all checks are in sequence and have been accounted for. All expenditures match those shown in statements. All deposits match those. All deposits match those shown on the month's bank statement. No irregular, you know what, I can't, I think you guys know what I'm saying. None were found, all right. All information has been organized and filed through the year and review. The town's accountant enclosed fine summary for all transactions for the month, including expenditures, summary deposits and a summary about standing transactions. So, so yeah, we have breakdown of, see return check, tax, all right, cold tax available, $2,740.
Tracy, I will say, may I comment please?
Sure.
Some of these older ones I'm working on because some of them were payroll checks. So I'm working on those.
I was going to say that, is that part of the list?
Yep.
We have looked at.
Yep.
Year after year.
I'm taking care of them. What I did is I did a. And what will happen if it did, I will clear this one, the payroll, because you can't delete a payroll check. So this one.
And I guess I'd have a question for Bonnie. That December, is that the duplicate check for the rec number you received too? It also, for $3,500 on the December 17th.
And again, and again, this is as of January, so it couldn't have been, it could have been since then.
Yep.
It has been voided.
Thank you.
On the system.
All right.
Carl Roy, building and CEO. So the winter's starting to pick up a little bit, so we slow here in winter for buildings, but starting to pick up a little bit. There was two new building permits, one pool permit and five electrical permits. That resulted in $1,260 collected in fees, but there are, there are a lot of inspections for builds that started before the winter, so that you can expect four new homes to be getting occupancy here shortly, in the next month or so, you should expect four new homes. Two of them over here and two from Pinkham. The year was, with the new season coming, now that the winter's cleared and everything, new notices put out to all of the original offending properties and new offending properties for trailers with the ordinances being gone and dressed with, with these guys out to one of the properties to let them know that they weren't within organs anymore and have been working with few of them and some of them were receptive, some haven't been receptive. But a lot of notices got sent out this past month, beginning of last month, and they have to begin, to the end of this month to show some progress with me before I have to proceed to the next stage.
How many notices were sent? You can just bump.
I think it was six. One of them, like, it's like two, at least two more that were like duplicates really. They've been like one dot and again and again. And, yeah, and that's pretty much, pretty much all I got for, for now.
I just have one quick question. So how, anything that has an outstanding, that had issued a building permit and it hasn't been signed off on or done an inspection in their past year, you'll be following up on that because they'll need to fill out a new application and stuff and?
They'll need to have, ask for, accept, ask for an extension.
Okay, all right.
Yep. And then the same with the two-year. After two years, they're gone, so now they need to reapply for a permit.
Oh, okay, so they're only allowed a one-year extension.
You're allowed a one-year extension, then it can be renewed entirely.
Right, okay.
For, after two years.
Any of the permits, new builds that I have to, just if they have driveway permits too?
I don't think there's anything new coming up. There will be one up on Pinkham, I can't remember the side of the road, but I don't know if we apply for it or not. One of the guys had built down here.
Yep, he did.
That's the only other new one on Pinkham that I know of. Can't think of that one. We'll play slow then.
Who else? Nope, Carl, thank you so much.
All right.
All right, now we have a presentation from Mark Schaefer from Aflac.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Ferguson, Ms. Hughes. I've been hugging you guys for a couple of months, being the opportunity to speak with you, so thanks for coming up with me. I go through the packet, there's four brochures in there. I go through the packet, there's four brochures in there on the policy. Back stroke, so catastrophic event, an injury, employee might be in a financial bind, and that's where Aflac, you might be in a financial bind, and that's where Aflac comes in. We give people money to help them pay their bills, okay? During the month if you have a bill, Hannaford won't do that. Rent, money's yours to help in financial, okay? As for me, I have about 15 municipalities. Despite of antigrade dolphin insurance, I can guarantee if you have some type of serious injury, medical, despite of antigrade dolphin insurance, I can guarantee if you have some type of serious injury, medical event, you're going to be paying money out of your pocket for some, okay? The reason I'm here is to hopefully get. Down to offer it. If you'd like to contribute towards an Aflac plan, like the city of Rochester does, you're more than welcome. Most of my accounts don't. Payroll deducted, you can pre-tax it if you'd like, if you have a cafeteria plan. If you don't, you can set it up at no cost. Claims, very important, I probably spend half my day filing and helping people with claims. You don't have to call an 800 number, although Aflac has got a great customer service team. I can help you with your claim, I can bother your claim for you. Best part of my day is calling the policyholders saying, your cancer plan, you paid $10,000, okay? You don't have to worry about the financial end of it, just get well, okay? So that's what we do. Question?
How far back can you go to file a claim?
As long as you have the policy at the time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Because I've had a policy since my children were little, so through the banking system, so I still have.
Still have the policy?
Yep.
Oh, good for you.
I still have two of them. I had to take the kids off when they get, what, 21 or something?
26, 26. Yeah, yeah. I can, I can file for you, just need paperwork. You had a BOO? I'll cut finger, just need the paperwork, so I'll get a cut finger, I can send it in for you.
Yeah, I can see which policies you have.
Yeah, I can help you with that.
Okay.
Where, where are the costs?
So most are about a dollar a day, okay? Like the cancer plan you have in front of you, just to confuse people, we have three of them.
Right.
Okay? The one we have is $12 a week, we have one for $8 a week, okay? We have accident plans are $7 a week. The heart attack stroke plan, anywhere from $4 to $10 a week depending on age. So the accident plan, we have three of them, we have three of these. So when we meet with employees, you know, if you have a budget, if I have $10 I can spend, okay? You can pick up a hospital plan for $7 a week and maybe a critical illness plan for $4 a week, okay? So they're all about a dollar, $1.50 a day. I'm 73, so the age-banded ones are going to cost me more than Chief Ferguson, who's what, 28? He told me he's 28.
You paid up into it.
He paid me, yeah. Good thing is our prices never go up. We've had a good price since 1955. Once you buy a plan, that's what you pay. I'm not going to raise it if you have a plan, if you leave, pay Aflac direct, same price. Unless you need a lot of work, but I think our cancer plan was founded in 1957, I believe, was when we came out with the cancer plan and, you know, kids are covered at no cost on the cancer plan up until they was 26. God forbid, poor child. But that's what we do. We just help people financially when medical issues arise, you know. In order to open a group, you've already actually prepared.
Okay, shut up.
Ah, I lost my.
I'm sorry.
Group, group. Yeah, in order to open an account, we need three employees to sign up. Sign up for any plan, but it has to be three to start an account. Once the account's set up, if one or two left, as long as there's one on the invoice, we're going to continue to bill. And we bill in arrears, we allow you four weeks or whatever your billing period is. They collect the employee's premium and we bill a month later, so you have their money, you're never responsible for any policy holders.
So Mark, right now you're looking for us to say you can work with our employees?
Uh, yeah. First step would be to open an account, which basically is done online. How many employees do you have? Who's eligible? Part-time firefighters, seasonal, are they allowed? 1099s, are they allowed? You want us to set up a cafeteria plan for you, so somebody has to sign off, someone authorized. Once it's authorized, then they give me a, a group number and I can go in and meet with employees individually in a group. I don't want to step on anyone's toes, so I do whatever you ask me to do. If you want to do it as a group, fine, usually with, well, with home, set up a time, come in, the employees, different shifts, whatever you're comfortable with. I'm sorry.
That's okay. When I originally got my policies, we were, the banking system had a very good, because there were so many, you got put in that kind of pool. So is, is, do you guys, do you have any pools for like the municipalities?
Yep.
To get the different rates?
It's standard, it's SIC.
Pools?
Standard, it's SIC. We have one based on, but all municipalities get a B, boy, B rate. Warriors get an A, librarians an A, coal miners an E. So the only rate that affects that rating is the accident plan and then short-term disability, which I'm not sure if you offer short-term disability to the employees or not.
So if we just, so we, you know, so I'll say it's okay if you talk to the employees and start that process, but you don't get three employees. What happens?
My boss fired me.
Can any existing plans be in the pool? No.
You mean transfer them from direct to, they used to let us do that. I know, I have to check.
No, this is scary.
I have to check to see if you can do that. Your bank rate is better than the rate here.
Right.
An A rate, this is, the rate wouldn't change, you could transfer.
No, I leave those, they're on.
Might be easier, payroll deducted, and then if you pre-tax, you would say they came 20%.
No, they're just kind of out of my account, my checking account.
Yeah, so if you transferred it here, you might get a, if you pre-tax it, say they came 20% more, so. Yeah, if you don't have three, you can buy direct, or we can only sell three policies direct, accident and cancer, the important ones, critical illness, but they cost maybe 50% more. So here you do a group, a group rate. Yeah, if you don't have three, you can buy direct, or we can only sell three policies direct, accident and cancer, the important ones, critical illness, but they cost maybe 50% more. So here you do a group, a group rate.
I'm down, I'm down, motion. I'll second.
Ball favor?
Hi. Hi. Again, so it's being allowed for anybody who works for the town?
Yeah.
And volunteers or just works?
That's up to you.
No, I'm asking the board, that's what I'm, I'm asking.
Do you think it should be voluntary or works?
I'm just saying, you know, because then you, I'm, I just want to make sure we have.
We don't really have any volunteers anymore. Do you not? I mean, I thought that question was answered years ago.
So would that be committees? Would that be?
Well, that's the question, so.
That's what I'm saying, is it?
I mean, I, I think it should be for people who work for the town.
Who actually get it, who actually?
Yeah.
Make money.
Get checked.
Okay, okay.
Get checked.
No, and that's fine, that's.
No, no, that's like.
I just want to make sure we have.
That's a good question as far as.
To say. We had that stipulation in there.
What's that? That's why I was, I was looking down at this stuff.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. So we're looking, so we're going to need to see if we have enough people.
Correct.
Sharon, you deal with your.
If we have.
Sharon, you deal with your people?
I have an income, speak with the fire department, we need that one. Since there's not an account, I will send you, like, over reports with the same plans. It's called a landing page, it only goes to those accounts, which we don't have yet.
Yep.
Once we have one, we can do your own, but I'll send over reports with the same plans.
So yeah, we'll start the process, we'll get the information. So yeah, we'll start the process, we'll get the information, and then everybody will reach out and we'll find out what the interest level is.
Great, thanks very much.
Absolutely.
So just, and just as a follow-up as that, so this is going to potentially add another layer into the payroll, which has died, so I just want to put that on, on your plate, okay?
Right now, I, let me look into, I think through all states, we already paid for some like a disability, a disability plan, so.
Well, no, we can just.
Right.
Okay.
So we'll have to look into how those are set.
Yeah.
Cool. All right, our next thing. Thanks, Mark. Thank you.
Should I bug you?
Yeah, she's there more often than not, more often than the rest of us.
All right. I set up the personnel policy or the revised personnel policy to everybody this past week. Hoping to start discussions on that.
I'll be honest, I had a.
I was just going to say that.
Did you send it electronically?
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I saw the paper.
I am.
I do note the one thing that I did see in there is that I thought there was some discussion, or maybe this is for future or to discuss as we get through it, is I thought there was going to be a recommendation for changing for PTO, and I didn't see that.
Okay, what is that?
I didn't see it, and so I just wanted to know, was that, is that intentional or was that overlooked or what?
No, it was overlooked.
Okay, all right. I will, now that, I will, I will read that in the next week.
All right, so we'll table that for now.
Before that gets accepted, don't you have to send it out and give the employees a 30-day?
Yeah, we just started the conversation.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm asking how.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we're, we're going to start going through what our recommendations are going to be, yeah, what our recommendation's going to be, and then once we. Is it going to be tonight?
I was under the impression that, yes, it was going to be here too.
I, yes, I thought he was supposed to be here, so we can, we can reach out to him, Tim?
Yep, I can reach out.
Sight, and it seems how a lot of it gets channeled through her and then she has to forward it along. So, and she, and I asked her, and she has no issues about doing that and whatnot, so.
So if it pleases the board, what I've actually was called, started working on is a communication policy that was going to deliver to you guys, which involved actually including Robin in the process of greater access. I've also contacted our town clouds, who provides us. Who provides us our website.
Right.
So.
Okay.
But yeah, so I've started that process already. Sorry, I probably should have mentioned that.
No, no, that's good. I just, it was just, it came. Long, you know, just she can get.
Or he was, or.
Last Thursday, last Thursday night, okay?
Okay, because last Wednesday, her and I actually sat down and we're having this discussion.
But before we kind of dumped it on her, we talked and we asked her if she was going to be fine, and she.
She was looking forward to having that.
Yeah, and she said she was fine with it, she was.
Yeah, that's what she told me before.
So I just want to make sure it's like we work.
Like I said, her and I started having that conversation. DOs comments?
I'd also like, I'd also like to say we have been approved to have the school for our next craft fair.
Nice.
So May 31st, we will be having a craft fair at the school. If you know any vendors, get in touch with us through the rec page.
You said May 31st?
Yes.
Perfect.
What time is that at?
11 to 4.
We'll sue your employee.
What's up?
We'll sue, and maybe the employee for the town over school.
So we'll be our employee.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Yes.
Do you have prices for boots or cables?
So the eight-foot table, eight-foot space, you'll have to bring your.
Chief's still waiting, chief's still waiting for, chief's still waiting for the date. All right. Any other DOs comments?
Just curious if you had more tips on remote access or remote talk?
I've worked on that.
Last week, if, when you go into the link, and we're a little behind the eight ball with them, but still, they'll get it done. And the last thing is, I want to remind them, we're a little behind the eight ball with them, but still, they'll get it done. And the last thing is, I want to remind the board and. Planning here at 5:30 to further have a visit, and anybody can join us. The two projects that are going to be worked on this year are Lake Lanin Beach and the rain garden at the Hampshire Shores.